Regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury, Monday, February 3rd. I want to welcome Mike Doyle, new alternate. Thank you for coming, Mike. You don't have to sit all the way over there if you don't want to, but you can sit in front of the blank sign here, too. We had a little trouble pulling a quorum together tonight. I guess the flu and the warm weather has, or the sun has called some people south, so glad we could do this. So, we will, on your very first night, appoint... Oh, do we have?
Yeah, Peterson.
For, yeah, well Derrick is going to be here, but for Kevin Gray. You can sit in. Alright. Next item is the approval of the minutes. I looked through them. I didn't see anything substantive, any changes, so we'll... We'll accept, uh... We'll accept the minutes as submitted. Alright. Derrick Peterson's in the house. So, the, uh, would you like to call, read the call? Do we have the call for Will to read? Public hearing.
Application 14-01 of James Widmore. Owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9. Simsbury zoning regulations for an existing accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 3 Winwood Road, MAP C19, Block 614, Lot 057, Zone R40. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. William Gray, Fisc Secretary.
Thank you. We need you to use the microphone because these are recorded. Just give us your name and address.
James Widmore, 3 Winwood Road.
Okay, great. So, you are, uh, do you want to tee this up, Hiram, or it's, I mean, we have a lot of the information. This is... An existing dwelling with an existing apartment in the basement, right?
Right.
That we're going to make legal by what we do tonight. And are there any other changes going to be made to the location? Alright. And it otherwise complies?
How does it not comply?
It's just would never been approved.
When was it built? Accessory?
It was just a, it's been part of the house, it was just the lower level of a ranch house. There were pictures, I don't know whether you got the picture.
Do you guys see the stuff on the website?
Yeah, the lower level of a ranch house, so.
Was it finished from the beginning, or? Don't know. Well, how long have you owned the house?
As far as I've owned it since 2007. Finished all the time. I mean, I put a sink in, I put a sink in. But I didn't add...
The stove was there the whole time? The stove was there the whole time?
No, no, I put the stove in and the sink.
Okay. It's owner occupied, I mean...
It's partly owner occupied, no question.
Yeah.
And it's meant to be an in-law suite? Or does it, is it defined?
The regulations don't require that.
Okay.
In other words, if someone, if the commission were to approve this, and someone wanted to rent it out, they could do that at their own, as long as the owner maintains a presidency in one of the...
Is someone living in it now?
Yeah.
They're renting from you now?
Yeah.
Hiram, what was the report on the Farmington Valley Health District? Did it comply? Because I saw there was a little note in there, we had to hear back from Farmington Valley Health District.
That's correct. It's actually, I asked the fire marshal of the health district and the building official all to get back to us. They all had their individual inspection. I'm not sure if the guy mentioned additional from the health district yet or not. An approval by the house is required in order to determine whether they can support both dwellings.
It should be there. I saw it, I saw it. I got PDS.
Yeah, here it is, it did come in, and it stated 2/3.
What's the maximum number of cars that can park in the driveway? In addition to cars being parked in the garage?
A maximum number?
Well, I mean, this, if I, if I read the materials correctly...
Five or six? I mean, I guess it would be a maximum number from...
It's a two-car garage and has a pullout on the side.
Says here, the residence has an attached two-car garage and room for additional vehicles to park in the driveway, meeting parking requirements, but I don't know what those parking requirements are.
It would be additional parking space.
How many cars additionally do you have?
I think it was only like one, or, you know, one or two at the most.
And they have to park in the driveway, not on the street? Is that true?
But the regs only require one.
Only require one? Okay.
Only one space for the additional space.
Alright, just so I can, and this is not for you. Really for, for Hiram. So, if this house is, if they take this bedroom that's in the basement and count it as a bedroom for the house, and they don't use it as a separate in-law apartment, then there's no issue with this, right?
That's correct. If it, if it didn't have a kitchen, food preparation facilities, for example, it was just simply a larger portion of the house?
Right.
That, that's not an issue.
Right.
So, it's the fact that you separate the regular house from the basement and use it as a, as a, a separate living quarters, whether you rent it or you have an in-law living there, that, that doesn't matter to us. It's just that it needs to be listed in the records as, as being an approved, separate dwelling, a separate living space within the same dwelling, right?
And, and what happens, of course, is when it becomes all the additional kitchen is when it becomes that additional living space, and that's when the line gets crossed.
And this is a little unusual, because the combined living space of the basement is actually more than the upstairs. Is that true?
No, it's less, right?
It's less.
It can't, it can't be more, according to the reg.
Well, it's under the garage, so.
It wouldn't be under the garage.
Can't, can't be more than the, than the main space, right, Hiram?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's only about a thousand square feet or 2/3 of the rest of the area. May I just comply with that?
Alright, this isn't any different than the one that we just had on County Road, where the woman bought the house and it had this space that was never...
Same, same issue. Same, it's the same issue, yeah.
I think we're going to start finding this a lot.
Yeah. A lot of people go to, go to sell, or they go to refinance, and they, the lawyers do their job. I, I beg your pardon. I read, I read this as saying the homes area is 1561, and they're seeking approval for 925 foot, square foot of accessory dwelling unit. The 925 is in addition to the 1561.
Right.
I could have done the math.
It does have to have a separate entrance, correct? And it does.
Says the apartment is roughly 59% of the gross floor area of the residence. That's what it says, right here in this memo. So, it can't, is the total square feet 2,400? If you add the basement and the first floor?
Add, I think add the basement and the first floor, I, I mean...
One of these numbers is wrong. I don't mean to be a stickler about this. We, we used to get into this math. It's under 1,000 feet, so it qualifies. This was when we changed the regulation, this is...
1561, I think, is the total.
If the total is 25, 2,486 feet, then the 925 is more like a third of the space, not 59%. Alright, that's, that's in Michael Glidden's memo? Alright, well...
Indeed, my guess is that the homes area, in its entirety, including the dwelling unit, is 1561, and that the portion being rented out is 925.
Which would make it 59%.
Exactly.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, the total's 24. But where does it say? It doesn't say anywhere, or 24 anywhere.
Well, let's look at the records the town has, the town has.
You know, when we, when we do these things as accessory dwellings that are built out from the building, we then take that square footage and divide it by the original square footage of the house. Here, we've got one where we've taken a piece of the house, and so the arithmetic gets screwed up.
Yeah, see, it says basement area is 1561, basement finished area is 893.
Yeah, I'm looking at the assessors' records, actually, Rob. It looks like 2,442 for the...
That makes sense to me. So, the only number that's wrong on there is the 59.25.
Okay, right.
Yeah, alright. That's neither here nor there, um, you know, uh... So, are there any other comments for the homeowner? We can open this to the public? Are there any, is there anyone here who came to speak about, uh, this? Okay, thank you. Please come to the mic and state your name and address.
I'm Kevin Crimmens of 5 Winwood. C.R.I.M.M.I.N.S. So, I live immediately next door to number three. I'm actually opposed to this use of the, of the property. For a number of reasons. It, it represents actually use of this single-family home as a multifamily residence. My understanding, and maybe I should ask the question, rather than say what I think it is, but what, what is an accessory dwelling?
Yeah, so this, this is a source of some confusion. It, it is alternately called, we used to call it an in-law apartment...
Right.
With an implication that there was some relationship between the, uh, homeowner, the, the home, but the regulation is pretty clear that the home needs to be owner occupied, but that the, uh, the apartment, accessory apartment, does not have to be occupied by a family member or relative. And in fact, the homeowner can actually charge rent for that, that facility.
The regulation says that they can charge rent?
There's no restriction for charging.
There's quite a few of these in town. You would not know it.
Right.
Yeah. And so hence the question about parking, because you want to, you know, what is ostensibly a single-family home from the outside? If there's five cars parked there, then it's all on the street, or, or there's not off-street parking, that's an issue.
And the regulation says that additional parking can't be added to the driveway for the accessory residence, correct?
There needs to be adequate parking for the accessory apartment, which is, I think, minimum of one additional spot.
But it, I believe, one of the numbered paragraphs says that you can't add parking for it, isn't that correct?
I think the lot has to have adequate parking for the requirement. You know, we've had situations where people have had a driveway and they've made a, a little space for an additional car. I think it's fairly, fairly common, so that, that has happened. It doesn't, I don't think it says that you can't add it, but you need to have room on the lot for it to be added. I think that's how, that's what it is.
Was, was it added, uh, did you add it, or was it added prior to you owning the house?
I didn't have any driveway or anything. I'd made a gravel spot to park my truck.
Parking spot? It seems like it was added for the apartment. Two-car garage, the owner's car is in one bay, the owner's truck is in the new gravel spot, and the tenant parks in the other bay, and the tenant's, someone else parks in front of the garage. So, there's two tenant cars there fairly consistently.
How many cars do you own, sir?
Pardon me?
How many vehicles do you own?
My truck moved in the garage.
Right. And how long have the people been, or person been renting?
Well, one person has been renting for the past two years. And then, um, she moved her son and a dog in, and then her other son moved in. She's been served with summary process eviction. So, I'm going through the eviction process with her now. But there, there are no reason that there's any other cars. I rent this to one person, not anybody else, with no pets.
So, her kids don't have vehicles also that are...
What's that?
Do our kids have age to drive?
Yeah.
She's being evicted from your house.
She hasn't paid me rent since December, in the eviction process. I was here.
And her kids are still, uh, living at the residence as well?
Yes, until I can evict them.
Right, which, do you have any sense of timing on that?
I, they've been served summary process of eviction, and they've served notice to quit twice, so.
I'm just thinking, I'm trying to process how many additional cars are on your property and...
One, there's one additional car.
Okay. So, the kids aren't showing up with additional cars and parking on the property?
Well, the one, the, the son is, with the, with the pit bull, you know, so. I gotta love it.
Okay.
There's the pit bull.
So, my, my help the commission...
Does it need a parking spot?
If, if the things that are happening that are supposed to be remedied sometime in the near future are one of the major concerns, I think that's, that's, um, something that the commission could decide to figure out and work that into its decision.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Hiram, but, but the commission's job is to either say that this is an approved accessory apartment, or it's not. And because there's no guarantee that the follow-on tenant couldn't have as many issues as these.
Now, I, I hear what you're saying, but...
Well, I think things like, for example, like the, the extra car is certainly something that we talk, can talk about. And the representations that are made by the applicant, I think, are important, too, as well. Because if those are going to disturb the neighborhood, obviously, that's a consideration.
So, we can make it a subject, too?
You know, I think depending upon what you, how you decide you want to word it, you know, the things that you've heard, hopefully, will be corrected. Some of those things are outside the commission's jurisdiction.
But that's what I'm, I'm wondering. Are we allowed to do that?
It has to do with safety, I think.
That's the reason for us not...
We have to be used only in conformance with the regulation, I think, is how you word it.
So, any other comments?
Yeah. There's, there's language in the regulation that speaks to the, the nature and the character of the neighborhood, the area. It's a single-family residential area. People come to Simsbury to buy homes in single-family residential areas, and we don't expect to have, you know, rental buildings next door. I'm not the only neighbor who's concerned about the impact on property values, the inability to control who comes and goes, uh, inability of the landlord to control who comes and goes, and, and the influences that come in. There's lots of young children in the neighborhood. There are, you know, elderly couples trying to age gracefully and quietly, and there is disruption that comes with this kind of, uh, use of the property. An in-law apartment is one thing. Everyone understands an in-law apartment. I don't think anyone, uh, generally would object to an in-law apartment. Sure, yeah, you can have crazy family members, too, but it's, it's a different situation than strangers who move in, later bring others, later bring dogs, bring extra cars. There's comings and going in the middle of the night. It's, it's disruptive to people's lives, and it's detrimental to people's property value. I'd also encourage the, the board to, uh, look a little bit more closely at, um, the history of this apartment. This happens to be a neighborhood that I wanted to live in for some time before I bought my house, and, uh, the house in question was sold about a year before I bought mine. And my wife and I had an opportunity, when it was available, to inspect it as potential homeowners. And at that point, my recollection is that there was not an apartment in the basement. It was a finished basement with one or two bedrooms, depending on whether you wanted to use a fully underground area, but there was no cooking, there was no sink. So, my belief is that those things have been added, uh, which, to me, changes the nature of it. It, it feels, unfortunately, like a ask, ask for forgiveness rather than permission force of action here, um, which I would discourage the board from condoning that as well. I, I hope you'll take these into consideration. I understand that there are other situations around town, but I don't think that they should all be viewed as the same. Please don't use a rubber stamp.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, Lawrence M. Sparks, for Winwood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Been in the neighborhood 18 years. Have known Jim, liked Jim, he's a good man. Had no idea that the things that were going on in the basement have transpired to the point where it explains some of what also has been happening in the neighborhood, and it's unfortunate that Jim, um, is having some difficulty with the tenants. Like Kevin who spoke before me, we came to the neighborhood because of the characteristics of that neighborhood in Simsbury. We know there's a group home a couple of neighborhoods over. We knew that full well coming into the neighborhood, and was able to plan for that. The character of the neighborhood is not one that I'm desirous of moving into had I been looking yesterday or tomorrow. If we were looking at the same property, it's ostensibly a group home now. Several independent adults coming and going is not the kind of circumstance that would lend itself to me easily and quickly moving in to the house we like. We, we bought our home because of the character of the neighborhood. It is, as Kevin described, um, filled with children and those aging gracefully. It's not my interest to be in a neighborhood where there's an abundance, or one, or several homes with unknown comings and goings. So, I wanted to express that.
Thank you. May I ask a question to the public?
Sure.
Would, would your views change at all if it was an owner who rented the entire house to someone else? Or is there an issue with the, having two families in the house? So, if Jim said, "I want to rent my entire house and live somewhere else," does that change at all your thoughts?
I think for me, uh, yes. I think knowing that there would be a family with a controllable situation, I think that would perhaps lend itself, but the idea that it might have more frequent turnover, I think, perhaps in a final analysis, might lend me to decide not to move into a neighborhood where it's... I grew up in an apartment house, um, and then eventually was able to afford my own, and in a neighborhood where there are none, so. The stability of one person knowing, knowing, uh, known comings and goings would be helpful. The, um, kind of, uh, transient potential that an apartment dwelling might have, not someone seeking to own and be there for a, a solid commitment, might speak to the concern that there would be rapid turnover, and we enjoy the stability of our neighborhood.
Yeah, you have a similar answer. You know, I think, if I can use the term, the nature of the clientele would be different. I would expect that people looking for a, a rental house to have different, uh, objectives and different lifestyle traits than those who might be looking for a small car for a short term, or even longer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I mean, I don't see how, I mean, a rental house would have to have a defaulting tenant that stayed there, and it just as easily as...
It goes, the question really goes to multiple, multiple occupants versus a single occupant.
And the size of the occupants. I mean, if you have a three or four-bedroom house, you're more inclined to have, well, I would think, a more family than single or a couple people, you know, moving into 900 feet.
Yeah, you can't, you can't predetermine or, or screen who your neighbors are, but it's, it's a question of density and, and price. So, I think that, I think some of the, part of the question is valid, part of it's not. Alright, so if there's no one else that cares to speak, Hiram?
I don't know if the chair, if the commission got this letter today. This just came in today from Ray and Daniella Montgomery, and I just wanted to read that to the record.
Sure.
I don't know if you got it or not, just, like I said, just came in this morning. Due to my travel schedule this week and not being able to attend the meeting in person, I am writing to you in regards to a notice I received about my neighbor at 3 Winwood and his intended usage of his residence as income-producing rental property. My vote would be for no and objection to use his property in that regard. Our neighborhood is a quiet residential, single-family neighborhood, and having income-producing properties were not what we're looking for in the area when we moved. In fact, we specifically avoided such areas with such properties when we made our purchase four years ago. So, in short, I would object to the proposal and application to allow this, so thank you for your time, taking the time, take this into consideration when making your decision on this matter. Regards, Ray and Daniella Montgomery.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else, or anything else for the record? So, I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Fisc, seconded by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. We will, if you can wait a few minutes, we're not going to go along tonight, but we, I think we'll take the things, agenda, and we'll get back to this in just a minute. Alright? Is that fair? Stick to our agenda tonight? Alright. Discussion of possible action on any agenda item, uh, including application 13-49 of Mark Lubetkin, agent for RSP Simsbury LLC, owner, uh, for a site plan amendment for the expansion of Redstone Pub on the property located at 10 Jim Gallagher Way, formerly known as 10 Mallway, MAP G10, Block 227, Lot 001A, et cetera.
Good evening. Charles Houlihan, attorney for the applicant, and with Mark Lubetkin. I wanted to speak briefly about a license agreement. The separation between the Bank of America property and the, uh, and 10 Mallway, or 10 Jim Gallagher Way, uh, doesn't have any clear visual demarcation. We believe it used to be under common ownership, and, uh, so when you're building it without survey, you don't know exactly where the line is. We have asked Bank of America to grant us a license, uh, to accommodate the emergency door. The fire marshal wants, uh, this, Redstone Pub exists, it is now rounding a corner in the back. The fire marshal would like to have an emergency door in the back, uh, for use in only those circumstances. Wants a cover over the door, and then there's a pathway leading easterly toward the arch. We're not sure if the door, when extended, would, would encroach into the Bank of America property. We have asked the Bank of America for a license. They have tentatively agreed, we're in negotiations currently, uh, to finalize the agreement, and they're, today, there were a couple of drafts exchanged back and forth. We've, uh, communicated through Hiram with, uh, town council. Town council, uh, issued a letter earlier today, uh, basically requiring that, you know, that the executed license, uh, be a condition of, uh, where they said the building permit, um, uh, you know, before that gets finalized, and that's a, a condition. In fact, all three of the conditions are acceptable, uh, to the applicant. So, that process is, uh, being resolved. It is not resolved tonight.
Okay. So, Hiram provided us with a fairly good email chain and, uh, one of the drafts of the license agreement earlier today, uh, which I've looked at, and you've had discussions with the Bank of America, and they're generally in favor of, are agreeable to doing this?
They are. We're dealing with their, uh, real estate agent in Florida, who's dealing with the Bank of America office in Arizona, and, uh, so we're, we're making the communications, and, uh, we received their first response today. You know, we're trying to get that squared away and make it work like...
So, this makes the fire marshal happy? Bank of America's okay? Mark, are you happy?
Absolutely. Soon as it gets done, we're ready to go.
We live to make you happy, Mark.
What's the deal with the, the property line? It, nobody knows where the property line is?
Yeah, well, the, the property line is not visually apparent. And, uh, uh, you know, there, there's, uh, there may be some encroachments back and forth over the course of things. the course of things. We could do a survey. That was not included in the budget estimate, and so we're not sure there would be any encroachment. But in case there is, we want to make sure that there was some appropriate agreement to deal with that. And town council recommends that it be, you know, filed in the building file and so forth. I'm thinking that we record it in the, in the town record so that if the, if the owner sells the property, you know, this license would carry on for so long as, you know, that emergency door is, is used that way.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. So we can have some discussion on this. I think we'll do this while we're talking about it, and then we'll go back to the other item. Seemed like a pretty simple solution to me, if the bank is amenable, to allow the egress and egress over the line and the awning over the door to perhaps extend over their property line, which just seemed like this is a pretty good resolution to the problem. So I'd be in favor. Any other questions?
I agree.
All right, so need a motion, Dave, or somebody?
I move we accept the application thirteen forty-nine for the site plan amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Just to make sure the attorney's memo with those particular requirements that he mentioned there. It's pretty clear as to what those are, and just want to be clear.
Clerk got that?
Attorney's letter of today.
Yes. All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so you're all set. All right.
Drive safe.
All right, we will now go back and consider the application fourteen oh one of James V. Whitmore for the special exception.
The special exception has to conform with, I think it's eight requirements. I'd like to hear a discussion of how it complies with each of those requirements in this case. Do you have anything like that? Hiram?
I think that we did go through the specific eight requirements, per se. I think that I can only say that what was stated before is that it's probably not a lot different than what the other residences in the same area could come in and apply for.
My recollection of those eight items is that they were quite, what's the right word? Quite qualitative in there. And I don't think that would be...
Does anybody have the regulations?
I'd like to hear them. I agree with you. I'd like to hear them. I'd like to hear, before I would vote on it, how these apply in this case.
Then you probably, yeah, and you, and when you do that, you should state, I made the same statement, you should state that you have a conflict and you recuse yourself, and then you should leave while we talk about it. So Mike, Mike is a resident of the neighborhood.
I'm a resident of this neighborhood.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
I'd like somebody to ask the Ethics Commission for some specifics on recusing yourself.
How to do it?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, I think generally ethical conflicts are where the person has an interest.
Financial interest or beneficial.
Financial interest or beneficial interest, then it seems that if you're in the neighborhood, that's a pretty big stretch to consider that a financial interest, but...
I'll give you a case in point. Somebody brought up that I shouldn't exempt myself from attending the meeting on the planning commission. I've lived in town all my life, so I know a lot of people. You know what I'm saying? You know, I have no financial gain, but you, you know what I'm saying? And I think you're right, just because you live in the neighborhood, you may not have to...
Well, I'll give you the other side of it, though, I, because it happened to me, and we're, we're on the record, but this, this is not necessarily pertinent to this, but McLean was doing their new development, and they were talking about lighting. Now, I have a butt, I was in a butter, and we hate the lights at McLean, so I, I could have said, "Well, I'll approve this if you fix all of the lights at McLean," you know, so there, there, I do have a financial, a benefit, some, that I...
I think it says benefit, not necessarily financial.
Financial, right.
But there are things like Ed recused himself last year from a, from a shopping center decision because he's getting his pension from a company that is in that business, and he has a conflict of interest clause, or whatever, non-compete clause.
That seemed like a stretch.
That was a stretch.
He was uncomfortable enough to want to do it, but...
But he's a guy whose expertise would be valuable in that situation. And here, it's seemingly removing anybody who knows anything about anything.
But you're right, there should be some clarification. Because I think a lot of the things we look at is what maybe a conflict really are.
We all know a lot of people in town, so it's not...
It's probably worth the exercise, but Mike, being you too, I can appreciate his sensitivity to...
Kevin is a new member of the Ethics Commission.
Mike.
He can work on that.
Oh, is he?
He can work on that. So if it comes in, I'll recuse from that.
All right. All right, Mr. Cott.
Parking, regarding parking, this is a public parking space dedicated to the accessory unit. The entrance is separate entrance, compliance with the other regulations, water and sewer and so on, but the standards, I think, is what the need for the proposed use and the proposed location. So I think that's a determination that the commission needs to make. The existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the use is to be located. Location of the main and accessory buildings in relation to one another, in this case, that's not accessory building, but it's attached. The height and bulk of the buildings in relationship to the other structures in the vicinity.
Not be...
Traffic circulation within the site, amount of location and access to parking, traffic load, and possible circulation problems on existing streets, existing driveways, not to change in this case, as I understand. Availability of water to the site, adequate disposal sewage, store water answered by Farmington Valley.
Other than well, what would they, what did they say about water supply?
That's all they would have to make a determination about.
District approved it.
Oh, they did?
They did.
I thought that was still a question.
No, sorry. We did get that.
Okay.
So adequate sewage and disposal and store water. Location and type of display signs, in this case, that's not, not applicable. Safeguards to protect adjacent property in the neighborhood in general from detriment. Those are the statements.
Okay, in light of those things, could we make constraints in our acceptance on, for example, only one person could be allowed to live in the in-law apartment?
I think that's probably too far to get away with, to be honest with you. For example, someone, a married couple moved in.
Or someone got married.
Yeah. So I'm not sure that that would stand up.
I know a residence that was built for an in-law apartment. The in-law died, and the party rents it, just that same situation you're saying, you know, a young married couple lives in there with a car in the driveway. So we would come police them. Who's going to police it?
I said...
This is where we get slippery slope, though.
Yeah, that's what, this is back to my original thing. So just, I'll make a couple of comments that we can talk about. One is, I personally do not like to retroactively approve things just because they exist, especially if they've been altered, you know, in the process to create a rental apartment as, as opposed to what was... So, you know, we won't use a rubber stamp. We'll look at it as, as if they, as if the Mr. Whitmore was arriving, you know, for permission before the fact. You know, I think the issue of, it's not, and just so you know, it's not very often that we have three different neighbors come and say that they really don't like it. And so we do take that into consideration because it is about detriment to the neighborhood and, and the intended use. If we deny this special exception, then the house has to be, does not have a approved accessory apartment. And so you couldn't sell it as that. And the use of the apartment as a rental unit would be in violation of what, Hiram?
The regulation, certainly.
Yeah.
But it would not, it would not have a proper permit for it to be used, so the kitchen would have to be... Other than that, somebody would want to have an extra bedroom in their house or whatever. Nothing to agree with that.
If you bring up the issue of safeguard, and you've got a tenant who is in the process of being evicted with otherwise, a dog that has generally negative connotations, you could, you could argue that the situation isn't stable, and that if it were denied based on a safeguard issue, could Jim then come back at a later time, once his situation had been resolved, to reapply?
I think that would be a... Typically, what happens if you come back with the same application, you're going to have to wait at least six months to do that. And that may not be an unreasonable period of time here. However, in the meantime, if he doesn't have a permit for that apartment and is required by the code enforcement officer to remove the kitchen, that may solve a lot of his problems, frankly, as well. I'm not sure, but that could also, so we could run a parallel enforcement action that may in fact help him. I don't know if that's what the commission decides it wants to do. So tricky, tricky question, though, Derek, I understand.
Well, I think given the fact that we had finished space that we didn't know about, and then the finished space was again upgraded with a kitchen, see what I'm saying? He didn't come in for any of these permits today, and now we're in a legal issue with the tenant, and you have a tenant's son who's living there with a dog that is, the neighbors are bringing it to question as far as safety concerns. I don't, I'm not comfortable approving it. And I, and I do think that maybe the proper thing to do here is to deny it and go back through the process. And if you say it's six months, and six months from now, we'll view it again. I mean, I don't have a problem with these in-law apartments, but I think this situation's much different. We had a finished space that we didn't know about, then we had a finished space that was upgraded to be a rent generator, and now we have a legal battle going on with the tenant. And I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but from what I understand, evictions can take months, possibly six months. There's also a parking spot, a gravel parking spot that's been put in that seems like a way to bypass, I mean, surely you could park in the, in the driveway with that truck. There's no need to build a separate area for your truck when you've got parking available.
You guys not make a decision, bring it out.
Side deal. Yeah, but we've already, that's...
I agree with you.
That shifts that, yeah.
And this may be beyond looking at the letter of the regulations, but the genesis of this allowance that we're, we're talking about does come from, we talked about the history of it, it comes from this in-law apartment. The idea is, I'm very sensitive to change in the character of a single-family home neighborhood. I think that the genesis of, of it was allowing an in-law to stay there, and then we, then we made sure that the regulations allowed for more than just that. But I think, I do look back at the genesis of it and think that, you know, when we talk about now, a situation which is, there are serious concerns by at least three neighbors, and it's not just a quiet, you know, occupant that, that doesn't really change the character of the neighborhood. It is changing the character of the neighborhood from what I'm hearing. So I think that that puts it more, for me anyway, it puts it in a different situation than what these were meant to allow to happen in a single-family residential neighborhood.
To that end, well, if I might interject here, if we base it on character, that's subject to the existing tenant. So we want to be careful if, that it's more along the lines of a safety issue than a character of the neighborhood, because we want to give the owner flexibility, to your point, Rob, about being able to market this for someone who may need, you know, an in-law to move into that property. So if we base it just on character, we're kind of saying regardless, it's, doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood to have that.
But if we deny this application, I believe that the applicant has to remove the kitchen and sink. He can still rent that room. There's nothing in our, there's nothing in our regulations that says you can't rent a room in your house.
If you can rent a room in your house, it just cannot be accessory property. No, it's the idea that they would probably have to use their own...
And I think what we're looking at is whether we force him to remove it, or we vote to defer it until he clears up. It seems to me the tenant issues are the things that make it violate most of the items that we've got in our list. And if the, if we were to defer it for some length of time, a decision, then he wouldn't be forced to remove the kitchen and the money that he put in it. He wouldn't lose that. And if he then cleared it up to the satisfaction of the neighbors so that when he came back again, they didn't come and say no, then we could look at it, maybe approve it at that point.
But I think to Hiram's point, this may aid him in evicting his tenant, because if he has to disconnect the sink and take the stove out, it's not a viable living space.
Well, I'm not saying approve it, I'm saying defer.
Right. Not deny or approve.
Not deny, just defer.
Well, we can't defer, we have to deny, right?
The commission can make, pick up at sixty-five days from tonight, make a decision. So he certainly could defer it for a period of time and see how things progress in the next, say thirty days or so, and see what happens. We can report back to you on that.
Can we deny it and give him six months to remove, or eight months to remove the kitchen and...
Once, once the commission takes that action, our code enforcement officer, the court regulation, we got...
But what constitutes remove? Disconnect the water to the sink and take the stove out?
Take it out.
Yeah, just take the stove out. I mean, you can just, when you functionally disconnect the sink, it can be in place, it just can't be hooked up.
The stove goes in the garage.
The stove goes in the garage. And that, that ends his tenant issue. It clears up this whole eviction issue, and we can hear it in six months.
I would, I would question where the water shut off would be. If it's in the exist, existing space, the person's just going to go under the cabinet and turn it back.
Well, if the neighbors call up and say that people are still living there, they're not going to live there if they don't have a stove and a, and a sink. He's trying to evict them, right?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure I can take the stove out while they're there, you know? I'm not sure I can make it, you know? I mean, I don't, you know?
Well, if, if we denied it...
I got a permit for the stove, and I got a permit for the sink. I got a, I got a, I mean, I got a permit for the sink. There's, you know?
I want to get a minimum just for this to the next meeting, and let me copy the attorney.
I think that that's what we should do.
And Hiram, one more point. Can we get a, a report from staff on each one, each one of those eight points being met, or why we don't need to meet it, so we can have that accompanying the...
That should be a template for these things. It usually is.
Usually is.
Yeah, no, usually we get that.
Nice job.
And this may give you time to get this issue cleared up with your tenant.
I move we table the application.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no decision made.
Is he allowed to continue?
The neighbors, particularly the neighbors that are here today and the ones who wrote in today, they'll, they'll receive notice when this is next to be discussed again. Because we do listen very carefully to what you have to say, and we'll want to hear you again.
Thank you. In the meantime, I'd encourage the board to look at Article seven, sub B, number five, regarding the driveway. And, no, you're right, the additional driveway and, or paved or parking spots or whatever, you could probably park next to the driveway, but if a gravel spot was created, I could certainly see how you'd get there. Absolutely. I'll address that in your...
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. We have any other business tonight? We will note for the record that Curalee's application was approved. We don't know what happens from there.
Curalee?
All right, Hiram? No other new business?
No, I think that's about it. The, there's a meeting, the code folks from Gateway will be back here on February eighteenth. I think I mentioned that last night. Hopeful that people will be able to show up. They will be in the program room with the library about the code for the Hartford. And working with them a lot in terms of getting, it's a detailed code, no question. Working with them to try to make a nice presentation to the public so people understand what's going on down there. They'll be back here that day to work with staff and C D R E and so on. But that night, they'll be at the library for the public meetings.
And our, we don't have a meeting on the seventeenth, correct?
President's.
That's correct.
President's Day. There was correspondence about the Powder Forest P A D. That has to go to D R B first, no?
There's a question about that. I suggested to them, you all saw that informal presentation that was done last time. And frankly, if they made the same presentation, I'm not sure D R B is going to have a lot to say about that. I suggested to them that they be further along with their design so that the design can be commented on by the designer people. They said that they were working on that. They were not ready for this meeting, no question, because D R B did not meet the season. They really had no other applications, so.
We had comments on design. I think we did.
Well, I know it's, I mean, repeatedly that we don't want cookie cutter buildings and.
But I think they need to be more specific in terms of what they're actually proposing.
Right.
Because all we saw really for the front piece was some blocks, you know, some sort of squares. The assisted living facility that was part of the second lot of Powder Forest Drive, that person who's under contract for that has decided not to become part of the P A D, which I suggested to them is not the best way to proceed for a mixed-use development, not to be mixed, is a problem. And that the commission would have some questions about that at some point. So they're working through that right now. That's where they are.
What's the existing zone?
So they would seek a site plan approval for just their assisted living on that pad, and it wouldn't be part of the P A D?
They're thinking that's a better way to proceed, and I had an extensive discussion with them about why I didn't see it that way, but it's their choice, I guess.
Well, it is, it is an issue, though, because they are so much further along on that project. And then the next one is the apartments and townhouses, and the one that they don't have a clue. Or they, no, they have ideas, but not anything firm is what's down in front. And that's where we have all the questions. So I could see why they would be, feel compelled to try to get that up and build. Because it could take them a year to figure out what they're going to do down in front.
One of the questions that's bothering me, and I think that we maybe, if everybody agrees, ask staff to do something about the density or the capacity or whatever it is with rental housing. I mean, we're being faced with a lot of applications for rental housing. And the number of units that's being proposed versus what we have, I'd kind of like a feel for what the market's absorption capability is for this kind of thing and how it compares to what already is in place. If it's 5% of what we have, that's one thing. If it's 30%, it's another. And it seems to me we're seeing a lot of it because the market for apartments is tight now, and.
Yeah, it's everybody's great idea, except when more than one, more than three people have the same great idea at the same time. It's not such a great idea. But you're right, the demand is noticeable, but if you build too many projects at once, then.
We could end up with, you know, an instant slum, if you call it that. I mean, nobody likes that term, but that's.
Or you could end up with a lot of homeowners moving into them and a bunch of vacant houses around town. I mean, you want, ideally, you want net absorption, you want people moving into town. But my guess is that a lot of the demand comes from people living in existing homes.
As Steve said, that's one of the things that I, when you mentioned this to me initially, I think that'd be a really good thing to look into, get some information, some specifics in terms of how much we can find out about what's going on exactly, what the percentages are, what we can expect in the future. That might be an interesting study. We'd like to be happy to look into that.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is part of sort of master planning. This is really a, isn't this a planning?
It is, and I would include, actually, when we do that, I would include the planning committee in their convention.
Because the last guy to get the, you know, come in for approval that has a great-looking project, but it's because, you know, we're going to turn it down because it's, you know, 300 units, the last 300 units that we don't need, we're going to have to have a leg to stand on this. You know, I don't like to keep leaning on the town attorney, but one at a time, each project on its own looks good discreetly. But when you put them all together, maybe we should have turned down the third and fifth one in favor of the seventh one, and we would have been better off. But, you know, we don't, we don't have that luxury, so.
But I would have to think these developers are smart enough to look. Hiram, how long have we been talking about these apartment buildings in the south end, the north end, and nothing's broken ground? Now we have a major insurance company leaving town. Insurance companies have all left Avon.
Yeah, no, they are.
I don't think that the bands are.
Well, it's not just how smart they are, it's how smart the banks are to lend them money. I know that Ritson took like three or four extra years to get the money for his, but how's his leasing going? Is he?
I don't think it's, oh, I don't think it's probably.
The ones over here, though, aren't they, the Grissmill are pretty close?
The Grissmill apartments are doing quite well. I think that they got some initial inquiries about the townhouses. They built that first model that's there. They put a foundation in for the second one. But I think that even the townhouse concept has slowed down significantly. I suspect it'll continue somewhat in the spring, but I don't think it's going to be built up.
But we have to be just aware of what the end game is for the developer as well. If they're merchant builders and they're coming in to build and then sell to a third party, that's one thing. If you have a developer or general contractor who lives in town and has a vested interest and has a business in town and is looking to, you know, expand in town, I think that's a different thing. So I think we have to look at motives as well.
I think you can know about that, and you can think about that, and be really careful when you try.
Well, when it comes to the P A D, I mean.
Yeah, P A D, we don't like the color.
Right.
Well, the fact of the matter is, you got to have a lease and a tenant, like you were saying. And banks are smart enough to know what the demand is. And if, you know, U D O F down here has, you know, a 20% vacancy rate, and Fish has a 10% vacancy rate, I think they do the math and go, if we can't rent these, we're not going to rent a 300.
The coordination between the commissions is really important. One thing I suggested to the Development Commission, to the first election a while ago, is that we have a periodic joint meeting of the land use commissions to discuss things like this.
I think it would be a really good.
Really good idea to kind of get not only E D C and planning and zoning, but the other commissions involved as well, so.
I'll go back, I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, there used to be a quarterly meeting of the chairs.
Yeah.
Is there still?
No, not since I've been there. I've never met one formally with Mike or now. Not to beat a dead horse, and I'm watching my eight o'clock deadline, but I do think, going back to this accessory apartment, I do think it is a shame that there isn't a way to distinguish between a true in-law apartment or one in which there's need and one where it's purely done for financial reasons. And we talked quite a bit about this when we changed the regulation, for those of you that weren't here. But it is a shame because, on the one hand, one is really helpful to a family, and the other, it does change the character of the neighborhood.
I think one of the things we could do, and would be legit, is to maybe change the standards for accessory apartments to be more specific and clear. I think that would be helpful. We used the sort of the generic standards before. I think what we ought to do is maybe, I'll get you a set of standards and some potential or proposed changes.
I think that'd be helpful because it's never too late to make a regulation better or more efficient. But, because this really was about an income property.
Oh, yeah, yes. That's why I was saying there was a chronological order of development here without the town's knowledge. But to go back to what I said earlier, Hiram, is you're going to end up turning your department into police officers because I come in with a need, I move my mother or father-in-law in. We move on, we sell a house, he buys the house. Hey, we got an income generator here. Who's going to police that? You know, so at what point does that use end?
Yeah, it's been going on for two years already.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be made aware of it. I had a discussion with staff today, actually, we were talking about, this actually sort of prompted a discussion. But what happens during reevaluation is lots of these things are discovered by the assessor's office. We never know because they never told us. When a dwelling goes from, you know, a three-bedroom to all of a sudden it's five or six bedrooms, and there's another apartment, we don't ever know. So what I've asked the staff to do is to meet with the assessor in the next couple of days to get a printout of all the multiple units in town and to see if they in fact have all been permitted. So we need to sort of start sorting through that. There's going to be a lot of them, I'm sure. But we need to start sorting through that so we can find that out. And maybe with that, with some new standards, we can figure out how to get to the bottom of this.
Now, quite frankly, when the building department is out inspecting for an installation or repair, they should be keen to look for this stuff.
They give them the okay for the stove and for the sink.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know, that happened in 2006, '07.
2007, right?
That's when he bought the house.
2002, right?
2007.
That's when he bought the house in '07. So I'm assuming the oven and sink went in after that.
Well, he said he put it in after.
He said he put those in. The finished part was done.
Yeah, he upgraded it to a kitchen after that.
If we step up the coordination between the departments, that'll help a lot.
All right, anything else?
Eight o'clock.
Is he going to do anything for us on the rental assessment of the market where we are?
He said he was.
Does everybody agree that that's what he should do?
Yeah, that's what he said. I think he said he was going to start working on that.
I don't think, I mean, I think if you asked Ron Genesco, he'd be able to point you in the right direction pretty quickly or be able to help you immediately.
I got a ton of stuff.
Yeah.
I've got an after the Super Bowl, Super Bowl party to go to.
I got some Bronco stuff I got to get rid of.
On eBay before.
I did.
When in doubt, it's Fisk. Sometimes it's eight, sometimes it's nine.